Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call and give my word. At this time, please stand for a pledge of allegiance to the Toddler's and his family.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow and give you a prayer, please. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another wonderful day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for the showers over the last week or two. Lord, we ask for direction tonight. We're humbled by your presence. Lord, we ask for guidance, and we ask that you'll watch over this council tonight and bless them and give them the courage and the wisdom to make the decisions that are not only in the best interest of our community, Lord, but also in your eyes. We ask that you'll be with everybody. It's here tonight. Give them safe travels. Bless those that could not be here. We ask all this in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Welcome everyone here tonight. We're at the IDA. We'll have a joint session later. At this time, we have an introduction of our new administrative employees and managers.
Okay, now, I didn't tell them because they didn't want to make them nervous, but they all will give you a big speech. No, I'm just kidding. I'm not going to do that. We all, we've had some turnover in the last several months, but I'm actually a little tickled to introduce to you tonight the last three administrators before we took our hiring. And I won't mention them to you in order of hiring, but I think I may have mentioned them, but Amber here? I don't see her. She's a dog or a bullet. But Amber, I think y'all have met Amber before. It's been a while, but she's our customer service associate. She actually came from Clinch Valley Bank. She was hired September of seventeen, so, I mean April, I'm sorry, April of seventeen. And then Sarah back here, Sarah Martin, if you'll stand and wave to everybody. Sarah was hiring in 2016, 2017, and she is our new payroll with HR clerk. So, and she came from Grundy National Bank. So, we've been smart enough in the accounting department to steal people that have a history in numbers, in dollar bills. And Sanya Hamdor, wave Sanya's hand up. And she was hired December 11th, 2017, as a customer service associate and previous employee. She was with New Peoples Bank. So, these are some of the faces that you see when you come into town. Fortunately, you don't have to look at this ugly mug. So, let's give a hand. You know, we've learned over the last several years that having a monopoly in positions is not very good for the town. You recall Billy Left and Robin for years had a pretty good monopoly with payroll and some of the HR stuff. So, we're trying to expand our horizons and prepare for the inevitable and get ready for other positions. So, that being said, welcome to the town.
Welcome to every town. Good luck there. Next on the agenda is Jeanette Wilson. I asked Jeanette to come speak for back issue month, and I've announced, I didn't realize she was related to George Dickerson. George Dickerson is a well-known poet, and I didn't realize it was his dad that, so her granddad at the time wrote this poem called "Tasseltown." And Jeanette, would you come and read the "Tasseltown" poems? "Tasseltown" is probably written already, one of the books of George Dickerson.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is the voice from the Virginia Hills. It was written by my grandfather, Lake George M. Dickerson. And the Lake George M. Dickerson, his son wrote poetry also. He wrote some poetry like "I'm Not Scared," and "Ask Lattice," and "The Rescue Squad," and different things like this. But this is the book that my grandfather wrote over probably seventy years ago. This book was copyrighted in 1949. And what happened was, we tried to keep up with our history, and so what our uncles and aunts did, they made copies for all the nieces and nephews so that we can recite them, memorize them, and do them at family meetings and things like that.
And then, please pay attention to this poem and about the history of "Tasseltown." It's pretty unique.
"Tasseltown," from the voices of the Virginia Hills. Oh, little town among the hills, I love their streets and stairs. I love the people better still than children and their series. The courthouse with its offices, the wide and ringing hall, the men who held the business down, methinks I see them all. The line again, and the powerhouse, the streetcars and the barn, the coal bins where we got the stuff to keep our children warm. The dam across the Clinch River deep, above halls lumberyard where boys and girls would come and skate when the ice was thick and hard. And sometimes, when the day was right, the people came to fish and went back home with heavy string to fill a tempting dish. The pecking house on Whitley Bridge, the cow and hog did slaughter and dressed the meat so nice and fine twould make a man's mouth water. The welding men who used God's goods just like they were their own, unminded of a settlement that sure as fate must come. The happy homes where boys and girls grew up like choicest flowers, where parents served the Lord and taught their children of God's power. The black folks and the white folks too, they seemed to need each other, and as a general thing, they seemed to get along together. And Christian hearts of Christian hands were there to do their duty, religion, its practical form, it was a thing of beauty. And to the prisoners in the jail, we sang, prayed, and read, some paid a fine, some served a term, and some were hung to bed. And two newspapers gave the news, both in and out of town, and every worthy one that died, they fixed the things up round. And sometimes, when one irony cuss died without faith or grace, they smoothed it, fixed it up so well, you almost won his place. For six years in a crowded room with children large and small, I tried to teach the public school, but could not seat them all. A little church in Tasseltown I never can forget, I labored there eleven years, I'm thinking of it yet. The dearest spot in Tasseltown is where the maples grow, but there our loved ones lie asleep in maple wood so low. Though many changes have been made, our hearts have not forgotten, fond memories live, wandering back around the dear old spot. And when my work is, uh, work on earth is done, oh, lay me down to rest in maple wood in Tasseltown with those I love the best."
Jeanette, appreciate that you come and read it, and I understand that they're actually going to have a reading of George Dickerson's at the museum there in the Southwest Festival. I think it's, I'm not sure what the date is. It's sometime in April.
I think it's 29th of May.
Twenty ninth. And so, put that on the calendar. We'll put that on the calendar and let everybody know that they're going to come down. Maybe you can read a couple of the ex-officer. Greg Carter is also related to George, and I'm not sure how who all is and else is, but I did give him his name. So, again, we appreciate, we appreciate all your family has done for the town of Tasseltown.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of events. I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the joint session and the council meeting on January 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, in addition, some corrections. Here now, call for a vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Next is the approval of the financial report. I hear a motion to accept the financial report.
So moved.
Second. Any additions or corrections for Leanne? If not, call for a vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Leanne, you want to give us a quick update on the real estate?
Okay. For real estate taxes, in October, we build out 694, 142. So, out of that, we only have owed $63,000. That's not too bad. It's doing pretty good. Personal property, we build out 195,000. We have 36,000 still outstanding. Over the past, probably month, I've been talking to David Lerner in the courthouse, and we've been talking about the set off debt program. I don't know if you all know a whole lot about it, but it would allow us to place kind of a hold on a customer's state tax refund. If they get a refund and they owe us taxes, we would get that before they would. They said over at the treasurer's office, it is a very good collection tool for them. I've also been working on a DMV stop spreadsheet that we do. DMV stops is if a customer owes a personal property tax ticket, we put a stop on them at DMV. They can't get their tags renewed, they can't get their license renewed, and that's really been beneficial to us lately, too. I also have a TACS report. You guys should ask maybe the December meeting. We had an auction on June the 29th of 17. Just from that one auction, we cleared $26,000. That is old tax tickets that were not getting paid, and now we've got to get some of that off our books and get them back active so the people that bought them will not pay taxes on it, and we don't have so much outstanding debt. A year to date, I'm sorry, a, since we started using the TACS to date, is 1,000, sorry, sorry, 110,609 dollars is what we collected that we probably wouldn't have been able to get. Do you might have a question?
I, you know, and basically the refunds and stuff like that, we come in, so, you know, you basically are 1% of the real estate taxes still owed, which is still pretty good with the income taxes coming in. I'm sure some of that will go down from there. And any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the town managers update.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have one other thing.
Okay.
Um, we have got three businesses in town that we are trying to collect mill stacks from, so just wanted to let you know that everybody's doing pretty good, except we've got a little issue with a couple, and we're trying to handle that, and Brad and I have been working on it.
How far behind are they?
Um, I have to look at my letters and let you know.
Whether they're going to tell managers update, I'm not going to talk to them.
Approval of financial statements.
Where are you at?
What do you do statements? There's two different. One's financial report, the other's financial statement.
We'll move back to Leanne if, if I had, I don't think they had a question about it.
I think she's done a good job.
Yeah, she's been.
The town managers update.
I move that we approve the financial statement.
Second.
I thought we already did it.
Financial report is two different.
It's two different things.
Okay, the one of just before, straight. Okay, we're, okay.
Do we need your second?
Yes, you got a motion.
I'll second it.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Next is the town managers update.
We shoot. Okay, just to give you a little bit of, if you'll recall, we made some unique agreements with Time Warner several months ago. Matter of fact, we reduced the length of their franchise. We were also encouraged by our legal counsel setting two chairs to our right to be sure to set up a documentation pattern in case in the end of that three-year term, there's reason that we can possibly go to a higher level and take, take different courses or routes to move with Time Warner. Just want to give counsel, we will have a public hearing or an area on the agenda for people to come out and voice any concerns they have. And, you know, granted, everything we do goes areas of improvement. So, just because it's pouring down rain, you didn't get to watch a Super Bowl, that obviously is not going to qualify for a complaint that we can take to the SCC or any other organization to. We're not looking to find reasons to fuss about Time Warner, but we do want to give the public the opportunity to file complaints if necessary. So, that will be on upcoming agendas. But I don't have any updates at this time. I could spend all night with updates in my ear if you don't have any much time. That's all I've got.
Okay, we'll move on to the planning commission.
Planning commission met last week. We discussed the structures for removal, overlay zoning, zoning changes. The structure removal will come up for the council tonight. And that's about all we have.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Next is the planning report.
We're excited that the work at the train vehicle is underway, especially the stuff that's been done. The work is in progress, and there's been rumors about that. Todd's going to share with us later on the agenda.
We'll move on to the financial business. The aqua park update.
All right, just to give you a little direction, the council recalled a month ago, I was given the notice to proceed by the council to make the aqua park become a reality, and, cancel, I'm telling you, we've started something. So, while I'm talking, and I'll make it quick, Glenn, Robin's going to flip through these videos up here. These little clips right here were actually a study that was done in middle school years ago, or might have been recent. Charity McDaniel, actually Charity Kirsten actually gave me these. So, this is what the middle school said they would like to see in the community with respect to Lincolnshire. So, is this a coincidence? We've got a committee that's working diligently now on expanding the horizons of Lincolnshire. Actually, the physical area of the existence of Lincolnshire will be expanded, but some of the things that the kids in the school system were wanting to see at Lincolnshire, and it's very ironic what they're wanting to see and what this committee is working on for tomorrow. The growth of Tasseltown or any other locality does not cease to exist after an accomplishment. It's a moving target, and y'all have heard me say it before, a locality that ceases to grow will eventually cease to exist. So, it's always a moving target. Expanding the economic background, offering to, you know, a better quality of life for our citizens, it'll always be a continuous moving target as technology increases and the needs for outdoor enjoyment for not only our youth, but the whole range of the social atmosphere. So, we're really looking forward to what the future will bring. While you're looking at that, we have got a go ahead from Gaming Inland Fisheries, DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, several other entities have looked at the idea of the aqua park, and we've got to go ahead so far. Some of the levels of turbidity will change throughout the year in any body of water. Fact is, every lake turns over at least twice a year. And what I mean is the cool water that's on the bottom, the streams that are feeding the lake begin to heat up, and they actually switch places. So, you have a higher turbidity at least twice a year. Same thing with sewer treatment plants, water plants, so they treat, they treat water differently at least twice a year, defined at least twice. The old lakes are the same way. And some of the areas of concern on the level of coliform that exist in any body of water, you call this direct contact sports when it comes to water and having activities in water. So far, what we've learned is there's a 126 per 100 milliliter count. So, if you're at that 126, it doesn't mean that anything's going to happen, but they're asking these entities that have water sports to send out the notice that it might be shut down for a day until those levels get back up. But we're nowhere near that 126. Out of four tests that we've done so far, the highest that we've had is a 13. So, the summertime will amplify those numbers, basic chemistry, just because of the multiplier that you get from the sunlight and the way it amplifies coliform. So, we're real hesitant to proceed with the purchase of the aqua park equipment. We'll be looking at that solidly into June. If the numbers still look good, we'll move forward. We'll be better staged up for next year. However, when it comes to the paddle boards, the weight boards, and all the other things that we do have planned, they will be a reality. And just to support my fellow fishermen that have voiced some concern, I've had a couple people stop by, we'll do everything we can to box off an area. Actually, I had an individual, I've had a couple tell me, they said, Todd, a fish has got to eat, you're not going to stop that. So, those fish locating to other areas might help our fishermen concentrate better on catching fish. I just put lipstick on a guy, so y'all can applaud that. So, we're really looking forward to the aqua park. I do know that the schools, the students in the community, the parents of those students are absolutely just tickled pink about the idea. I was actually with my daughter's basketball team over the weekend, and I asked a question, and most of the parents were there, and you could not literally make out an individual response. They were all just smiles, and yeah, my daughter would be there every day if you do it. We go to Ace Venture or Holstein, so really tickled about what that could do for our youth and the community. Not so much youth, there's a lot of parents like myself. But that's just a little bit of an update. Obviously, we're a little concerned about it and what the outcome will be, but definitely we'll absolutely have a more solid idea for next year if we have to procrastinate too long this year. But I'll keep it up now.
Next on the agenda is the mainstream of fishing.
Okay, last year, if you'll recall, you know, as our community grows, the growing pains come with it and the stress of trying to manage events and, and work with our community and businesses as they strive to increase their profile of their existence. So, I applaud these growing pains, and they are growing pains. It's a little stressful behind the doors, but, you know, I'm tickled to death to be, see businesses stepping up, wanting to give back to the community. One of the concerns that we had were vacation time and public works, the ability for them to get off, you know, to schedule a vacation time and keep it. A lot of people say, how much do events cost? Obviously, events like the truck and tractor that we have on Main Street for the kids, we don't need to flee the police officers at that. We don't need a whole lot of public works, but to define the event, some of them that may, you know, require an ABC license, they do amplify the existence of, the need for an existence of more employees and obviously more police protection. So, what we've put together for council's view, and not looking for a vote from you tonight at all, this may not even be what you were looking for at all, but it does give a caution to have events on Main Street. So, we've broken it out, and I say we, I'm actually, I actually mean Robin, has spent a lot of time, and broke out historical numbers that we have, because Mr. Pruitt, the police department, they all report on a log sheet, every event that we had. So, these numbers are not made up, they're not fantasized, they're actual numbers that we can actually show you, and she's prepared to do that if necessary, but if you flip over to the next page, some of those definitions of those numbers are right there. I don't know if this is what you were requesting for staff to produce, but I will assure you that from now till snow flies again next fall, you will get more requests for street closures than you had last year, and thank God for that.
This, this is basically not including the Main Street.
It's not, it's not Main Street. The cruise ends we have on, they're town events. So, we've defined a lot of events that the town has, the cruise ends, the movies on Main, Main Street moments. If you're looking for how you want to handle people that step up, that want to close Main Street, and I'm not saying for what reasons, I don't know what those reasons are going to be. And sometimes, just to be frank, it could be for personal gain. However, that personal gain could also be an economic move for the town in general. So, it's very convoluted. Once again, I'm not sure if this is what you were looking for or not. We can back up and find if it's not, but it does give you caution for events that are held on Main Street.
So, is this the caution you're asking the vendors?
Totally up to y'all. We've just kind of put it together. There's no capital gain in here. These are exact costs. And once again, I applaud counsel in what you've done for the community. We are, for the record, the fastest growing town in the county right now. That is a fact. It's not because I'm just a little bit biased, however, probably is, but we are the fastest growing town in the county. So, there's a reason for that, and because of that, you are going to continuously get questions that are going to be a little tough to answer, and it's because these businesses want to prosper, and they want to continue to grow and thrive, and frankly, I'll blame them. So, the request that you had to shut down Main Street last year, you ain't seen nothing yet. So, just give me some feedback. You don't have to now, you can send me an email, just, I'm not sure if this is what you were looking for at all, but I know that you're going to get requests in the middle of the year. We had a, what, in January, February?
January.
It was January, we called a meeting, and we invited everybody that has historically been a part of street closures, and we've got a schedule, we've got a schedule of like Main Street, Fourth of July, you know, cruise ends. However, I know that there's going to be other entities that step up that want to do something different, and it's not going to go away. It's not. So, I'll assure you this, we will handle, we will. My staff and I, we will handle accordingly if they're every weekend, and people all over the county, cancel, are looking at you. I'm telling you, from one end to the other, they see what we're doing, and they see what's going on, and it's bringing the economy to the area. You're going to hear from people later on at night that are before you for that very reason, because they see what's going on in this town. So. Todd, I still want the idea of exploring rather than wearing out the staff that we have. If we're going, if we're going this direction, and we hope to keep going this direction, that we hire some type of temporary event staff that we can put in place to, so everybody doesn't get bummered all the time, that something could be a part-time job for people that they, I don't know how we feel about doing that, but. And we can, we will absolutely do that. And public works, employees, they change their mind from week to week, you know, they're burnt out, and they need some time off, and then the next week, they'll be saying, you gotta be overtime, I want to work overtime. So, they, it kind of goes back and forth, and Mr. Pruitt does a pretty good job of juggling those events. And, you know, we will, once again, we will have, we will do whatever needs to be done to continue to see the town thrive. to continue to see the town thrive, you know, to give the citizens, not all of this town, but the region, you know, something to do, something to look forward to. We will do, we will continue to do that as long as Cancel behind that. So, and we will, Dr. Catchman, we will absolutely look into other alternatives, and I'll talk with Lieutenant and Chief, and we will prevail one way or the other. But my heads up to Cancel is, get ready, you're going to have a lot of requests, and if you'll recall, anything ABC does go before.
I think we need to probably do that for the next meeting in order to get our...
Sure. We got plenty of time, I'm just trying to jump in there early. Once again, I'm not sure if this is what you were looking for.
I like it.
Yeah.
I'm curious as to how we decide what's a town event and what's not, because that's been, people that have been there doing it already that aren't getting these numbers, technically, that's a pretty gray area. Are they actually town events?
No, it's a good point.
But does the town profit immensely from them, from the business and the economy it brings in, without question?
Absolutely. So it is, it is a very recognized gray area. It's very, it's a very, it can be very politically a gray area. So I'm very sensitive to that, and I know exactly what you mean, but I'll assure you, if everybody comes to Main Street for whatever the reason, is an economic boost to the economy. So I'm very sensitive of that, and I'm not recommending in any way that we, that we charge any fees at all. And to be honest, I think it needs to be evaluated on a one-on-one basis. I think you need to look at each one of them and be, and be prepared for some criticism, because they're all going to be different, and it just is what it is.
Well, one thing Cass for was, if it was basically for profit or whatever, had they charged, is for them to provide some type of financial statement. Without that, you know, I think...
That's not on board, though. Just ask where it's going, but I...
It's not, it's not, and I did, we did think about that, and once again, look at your environment, look at the players in the game, and just let me know if you're sure you want to do that. As I tell you, the difficulty with your businesses are full profit.
Yeah, we want them to be profitable. We got no business sitting up on this bench right now. We cease to exist.
They're not a 501(c) entity. So I was very much aware of that, and in some of the events, like the mayor's saying, we have in the past asked for some information, and maybe we need to be a little more aggressive at that. But once again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm trying to deliver a product, just to start a conversation, and we'll bring it up again.
I do believe we need to be proactive, we don't need to wait until it's too late.
Sure.
Quite appreciative.
And we'll keep going, and Chris and Lynn, both of you, everybody that's mentioned anything, it's a very complicated subject, it really is. It's not that it's, it's not that it's socially sensitive, it's just a very sticky area. So anytime you shut down Main Street, regardless of what the reason is, it's bringing the economy to this area.
The only other thing I'd like to see, just for some semblance of some sanity with all this, is that we have a cutoff date, so that on this, there's an application, and I don't know what that date is, but so that somebody's not coming here in June asking us to...
There are sixty days on each one.
Well, if it's on here, they have to do it at least thirty days before the previous cancel meeting, so we've just narrowed it down to sixty days. And I'm telling you, we can have it in writing, we can post it on the town website, somebody's going to come to you two days before an event, one-on-one, do something.
Sixty days.
Yes.
Prior to that day.
Yes. But you're not going to...
Somebody waits that long, they probably won't have the data available, though.
But it's still going to happen, I'm telling you, they're going to, I can post that, put it in red letters, but there's still going to be coming for you for that.
Just put that on the list of all the other great problems you have, right? That's a good problem to have.
It is, but I'm serious, applaud, you know, once again, I can't stress to you enough, my staff and I, we will handle it, and we will prevail. But, you know, applaud yourself for the problem that you've got, that you've created. It's a good problem to have.
Everybody in agreement to the case of this until next year?
Yes.
All right. Next on the wastewater treatment plant, plant upgrade, R and B.
Okay, if you'll recall, we were fortunate to get a grant from CPPD, Coven, Planning District, in the mountain 27, 62356. We've also got another, another grant that we received that I've already sent out, the Southwest Virginia Rural Community Assistance Project, fifteen thousand dollars. We ran a request for proposal, and for the first time since I've been with any town, twenty-three years, we only got one response from that. And ironically, the one response that we got is who we have been working for under Virginia Petroleum for the last five years, who was David Dawson. So maybe it was a blessing in disguise. So needless to say, since you just got one, Jack, I really didn't have to get y'all together to interview. We went ahead and wrote the letter, and the last page on there is a quote from Mr. Dawson. And he has also contracted with Thompson and Litten, who is outside of our agreement, they're sub to him. So they will be joined, joined in ranks with an engineering firm that's established in the area. They actually did the last upgrade to the sewer treatment plant. We've obviously worked with David Dawson on several big, big projects, and he actually, actually did the engineering and original proposal on sewer treatment plant. But that cost us forty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which is below the funding that we've got amazingly, if we're to have worked in it. But I would recommend to Cancel, obviously, to proceed with that. You've got the proposal in there, no action will be taken at this time, other than getting them started on that sewer plant, engineered DER. You're not allocated to any other funds, or not any de-obligation of funds, everything is allocated funds to the grant.
Good question for the advantage partnership.
I'm moving.
Second. Any other discussion? Your name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is council appointment, me.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to, I had a talk with Mr. Clyde today, and I'd like to table that until next meeting, he had some concerns that we need to look at.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, next is new business.
Did I bring up something still, and it might not be the place or the time, but I've had a lot of people talk to me about the Y, not being able to use the swimming pool, the gym, so on and so forth. And one thing that's bothering me more than anything is the amount of money that we're giving to the Y from the town every month. If they have the money to go start another Y in Claypool Hill or at the college, or wherever it is, and then in Lebanon, where is their money coming from to operate these Ys? Are we, are we financing them also from the town? That's the question I would like to have. And then, I think we had asked the person that runs the Y to come in and give us an update every few months on the Y. We haven't seen him for a long time.
Sean came, I think he came when you was gone that one time, Sean Jordan.
What month was that?
That's been a while.
Sixty grand, same back in the fall.
But again, I, you know, I'm concerned that we're collecting tax money on cigarettes, we're giving it to, to the Y to operate on, but they can afford to open up two more places.
They're just at the college. They're just at the college, too.
They're not in Lebanon anymore?
They're not in Lebanon anymore.
What is the issue of people not being able to use, what are, what's... Because, well, because you've got swimming team using the pool a lot, you've got, as I think I talked to Todd today, and we talked about this, was they were renting our huge drive-in for a long time until we put it, they, they're no longer renting our gym, so they have to be doing the stuff out of the Y. You know, they take it up to town after. And it's just, I talked to people trying to support the Y and saying, you need to go here, and you need to do this, and the people say, well, I did this, but I can't, I can't do this, I can't do that, because of things...
Why don't they have posted times for their youth basketball leagues and stuff, which is what they're supposed to use that for from all over?
Oh, we'll have, I'll get in touch with Sean and have him come to next council.
But I just, I just don't think that our money should be going to support the Y someplace else. I don't think that Richland, Claypool Hill, or the college, or anybody else donated the money that we donated to the Y from this town. That's all I have.
All right. We'll move on to new business. Virginia Enterprise Zone.
Yeah, if Cancel will recall, we have an opportunity once a year to evaluate and reevaluate how you want to categorize that, the Virginia Enterprise Zone. The county has allocated so much square, so many square miles, and all the counties consume a portion of that. We moved it, because, we moved it to Main Street, we've done several different adjustments, but another area that I've, I've already asked the county to look at and evaluate is the Kinske's Lot. The picture's in there, if you're not familiar with where that's at, it's like beside Food City, it's a vacant lot there. There's also another, there's two more lots that are joined Professional Drive and Market Street, right there on the inside corner. I think both of those, all three of those locations, it would be pertinent to the town if we could have added to the Virginia Enterprise Zone. One other area that is not in the Virginia Enterprise Zone is the theater, and it's barely out. I mean, it's literally shaved out, I'm not sure...
We bought the new property we had in the town, by the post office.
The bowling alley?
Yeah.
I think it's out. It's all in the tourism zone.
I'd like to get it in the enterprise zone.
Okay, we can, we'll look at it, but our incentives duplicate the tourism zone.
We can do it, we can do it.
Yeah, we can do it. It has to be contiguous, so you can't...
Can't spick it.
Yeah, I can't just go out, it has to be a contiguous connection. Matter of fact, we're very, ours is very interesting, because we're using a route to make it contiguous. Anyway, I just need Cancel's blessing to proceed with those three.
Absolutely. Motion approved.
And as, proceed. I will look at these, obviously, look at the bowling alley. Unfortunately, I think it's going to be out of the, contiguous. Yeah, that works.
We have a motion to add, or request, and add to the county for the Enterprise Zone, for the Kinske's, the property owned by Martin Wright, and the property owned by M A Y R Incorporated, forward in section. There you go, motion in second.
I'm going to run it back. You want to? Yeah, he's, I'm going to, I'll step in. But that's all right, I'll send him the motion.
It's under, it's under, it's got an option right now, but he's still got it.
Okay, you got a motion in second, any other discussion? Your name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on agenda is approval of the American fireworks contract.
Three or four years ago, we got beat around pretty good for moving the Fourth of July, if you'll recall.
Was that your idea?
No. I'll take the hit, though. I'll take the hit for that, but no, it wasn't. Anyway, we've done due diligence, we've got a cost of seventy-five hundred dollars for fireworks, and obviously, we...
It's the same company, we have much different.
I make the motion that we approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of combination of houses.
Chris.
Mr. Hillary.
In your package, you should have pictures. Can you see them on the news app?
Yeah.
All right, the first one's down on the corner of Carline and Tazeway Avenue. It's the old bar, bar shop.
Little bar shop right below Jim Nicklebottom's house.
Brad, we need to bet on these separate, I'm saying, right?
I make the motion that we take it down.
Proceed with con, next.
Proceed with con, next. Whatever.
The one on Carline and Tazeway Avenue, getting a motion in second, we have a comment. Your name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second house is down on Tazeway Avenue, it's actually beside the entrance going into Bluegrass Oils. It's actually behind the barbershop. Shriek House Barbershop.
Does the cat go with it?
It's probably, can the cat go with it?
Can you make sure the cat's safe before you take it?
Well, that'd get messy, though, for that, so we take it down.
I'll make a motion for proceeding with con, next.
I'll submit that motion.
You have a comment? Your name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Third one is down, this is Flor's house.
I'll make a motion that we throw a fee.
It's on the same street as Flor, anyway, don't play it the same street. There's two pictures of that, two or three, actually, one inside and actually front porch column.
You don't want to renovate it for us?
Probably more than it's only...
I don't believe that one would be renovated. Look at the picture.
Okay, they have a motion for the 190 Blackspur Street.
I make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any comments? Your name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye. Last one's on Dogwood Road, doesn't have a address. Probably hadn't since the nineteen hundreds or something.
He's up there fiddling around. That house up there was ready to be tore down when I came on council, and Mr. Mullins will remember, and one of our town councilmen had owns it, and it was put off, and it was put off. I recommended that the planning commissioner, we give him sixty days to either do something with it if it has any historic value, or just get rid of it.
Second.
So you're making, you get sixty days to the...
All of them sixty days anyway. I have had to make statements, it's just, needs a little post again, sorry.
You have a motion and a second, this is not for combination.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's got sixty days.
All of them sixty days.
That's automatic.
Got a motion and a second, you have a comment? Your name, call for vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the setting the ground breaking deck for the town, what casual thing you put?
Cancel, I've been around for quite, for quite a while, trying to, I've talked to both of our federal congressional senators' offices, by the way, and actually physically talked to Congressman Balfour while we were in Richmond, and having a little bit of a hard time getting them. I'm sorry, Congressman Griffin, I went back in town.
You're anywhere, damn right.
But I've had, I've had just a little bit of a hard time trying to get them in, but I feel like we need to proceed, it's already under construction, but I've got a date set of March, set at the ten AM, and Woods is doing a ground breaking, and John's already taking pictures down there, and it's coming along pretty good. Is that date okay with you guys?
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Wednesday, March 10.
Yeah, ten AM.
Why ten AM?
It's when most people can't be there.
Exactly.
I knew that's where you'd go. You know why, Dr. Perton and I had anything.
It's just a typical time for groundbreaking.
Typical time for stuff, people that aren't working.
Okay, I'll, I add this to the, the agenda here, we need to vote on approval of our auditor, and I'd recommend that Robinson Palmer, the, our new auditor, have motions for that date.
Yeah, and let me add some, too, your recommendation is admirable, but it's based on professional procurement process, it's not because of Mayor Lightman, it's because that's where they scored at.
I'll make that motion.
Motion do you have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? You're not in call for vote, on paper say aye.
Aye.
Meanwhile, the agenda there.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, bring it up for council.
I have a motion to move to executive session.
And just kind of entertain the motion to go to executive session for...
Mayor was going to the speech.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll get her here. Joint session for the IDA, we got four prospective businesses, privacy of individuals, I'm glad you're, public business, another one for privacy of individuals, I'm glad you're public business, and town council only personnel matters, town council only personnel matters. So I motion to that date. Do you have a second? On paper say aye. I guess the IDA will have to do yours.
You guys have to do yours.
IDA needs to make a motion.
Yes.
Yep.